To the city council work session for the city of Fairhope. First item up, we're gonna have the mayor and Kim presenting a review of the budget. We're gonna be going over capital and revenue. Council, you should have a lot of handouts.
Have a lot of handouts. So I'm just gonna start and then I'm gonna turn it over to Kim, because she's a little bit slow moving. So I can start. Today, as y'all know, on the work sessions for June, July, and August, the last meeting will be dedicated to the budget. This is in an attempt to make sure that, as we move forward, that all questions from the council are asked and that we're very transparent in the budget process. What we're going to be reviewing tonight is revenue projections, because we know that everybody has, you know, strong opinions about that and how those need to be presented. The other thing we'd like to do is find out from the council. We have started looking over capital projects, but ask the council, what are some projects that you would like to see in the next budget? Make sure those are included if there's something that you would like to see. And also possibly talk about some of the projects that we've mentioned last week that we might be able to go ahead and fund in this budget. So in this budget cycle. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kim. Thank you.
Kim?
Good evening.
Good evening.
What you have that I've laid up there for you to see is, I wanted y'all to see where we were for May for our sales tax or local taxes. So where you can really see the growth that's happening in the city of Fairhope and in our collections. Also, you'll see what I've labeled as draft budget F 2023 is I put together, this is just for some preliminary projections, and I put on there, you know, budget explanation so you can kind of see some, you know, scenarios of where I got the information. We can start with the property tax, the real estate tax. We've got a preliminary that has come from Ballin County's Revenue Office. What I did with that, since it is preliminary, is took 90% of that number, and that is due to, right now, they're having some appeals. They have around 1,000 appeals. So talking with Teddy Faust, it was recommended he'll have a final draft in August. So this is really a placeholder to be able to put on there. Once they finish the appeals, they'll have better numbers. You know, and it's just if you have some, if you end up having 1,000 properties in Fairhope and they appeal and they lower the dollar amount, that could be, you know, a little significant impact to city of Fairhope. So I didn't want to, I wanted to be conservative on that number until we get a better number from the Revenue Department. So you can just see what I feel like is a conservative number. If you'll notice, what we budgeted for '22 in the local taxes is actually a million dollars less than what we actually received in 2021. So we were very conservative when we started this budget in '21. And so on a conservative note, usually a 3% per year growth is a very conservative. You can see we're running this year about a 15% increase from '21 to '22. So what I've got in this budget is really taking '21's number and doing a growth rate of 3% per year. I wanted y'all just to be able to absorb this. Y'all may want to come back at when we have some other budget meetings and just go through, you know, go through some of this, or shoot me an email of any of them that you think is, you know, maybe is a high number that we want to lower it. But I wanted this to be your first look at here's potential for the revenue, because we do want to make sure the revenue is in a good number. So when it comes balancing, that we're cutting expenses, not necessarily trying to cut the revenues, or try to get those revenues in line. And then what I gave you is for the sales, so you can see sales tax, lease tax, not lease tax, but the lodging tax. So you can kind of see where we are currently, you know, to give you some idea, you know, where the city's going with our collections. Do you have any questions? And this may not be the time that you want to absorb, this is a lot of information that you want to absorb.
No, I think, council, do y'all have any questions for Kim? I mean, I think we can certainly come up with a few questions or comments. I mean, the one thing that jumps out at me is city sales tax. I just might want to be more conservative on that, because I know 2021, there's a lot of money floating around in the economy and to do a 6% increase from that. I mean, we've got people moving here every day, so it might be that that number is easily attained, but it also might be that the next 12 months, people tighten down on their wallet a lot also, so.
Yeah, and we got three new grocery, well, I couldn't say three. We have two new grocery, I was trying to look at, we got two new grocery stores that will be up. We've got Aldi's that will, should be up and running into the new, when we start the new year in October. I kind of looked at that. That's the reason I kind of looked at 3% per year growth was a conservative number. But, I mean, you know, we can lower this. I was, and that was the other reason that, you know, I wanted you to see where we are this year. We're at a 15% growth. Last year, we were at 14.6. So when we went from '20 to '21, we were at 14.6. And then so far, year-to-date this year, we're at 15.4 growth, you know, over.
Can you tell me that number again? You went from '20 to '21, you had a 14% growth, what number?
Yes, so when we went from our year-to-date at 2020.
For what number?
Sales tax. Let's just look at just sales tax in total. Look at the graph.
It looks like sales tax went down from '20 to '21.
At sales tax, 700,000.
In total, we made some adjustments on putting some inside city, outside city, if you're looking at, if you're looking at the draft here. But if you'll look at, we've got some separated, because I had to break things out between inside city, outside city.
Gotcha.
So look at the bottom number, the 13.8 versus the 11.5?
You look at this graph here.
Really, you'd be looking at 921 plus 8.6. Right.
So when you include sales tax, inside city, outside city, consumer use, and if you take those totals and look at this graph, so when we went from '20 to '21, we had a 14.6% growth. And year-to-date through May, in sales tax, we have a 15.4% growth.
Okay.
And to give you an example, the lodging tax for inside and outside combined, when we went from a '20 to '21, which '20 was a hard, hard hit. '20 was hard, hard hit by travel. But we did a 42% increase from '20 to '21, and year-to-date, we're at a 44% increase in lodging. So, and I still have that, just doing as a 3% growth per year to a total of 6% that went over a two-year period. And I'm waiting to see what June's coming, especially for lodging, if any of the fuel prices affects June's numbers coming in. And we have a little bit of time to monitor some of this, if we're starting to see, you know, some kind of a dive to go in. Meaning, if you want me to look at a two, you know, being able to do a 2% across the board, being a 4% over a two-year period, we can plug those, we can put those numbers in too.
Okay. So right now, you're just looking at about an 800,000 increase over 2021 actuals. Just about 3 million over 2020. Okay. For total local taxes. Council, any questions up till now?
And I know we have some meetings scheduled in July, and so this is a lot of information for you to, you know, absorb and make notes of too.
Keep going, I guess.
And, I mean, that covers the local tax. And you can see business license compared to what we budgeted, to what we collected. You can see we were very conservative, you know, all through this. And so, I mean, I just noted, a lot of the taxes that we don't, it's hard for us to control and judge sometimes. I'm just putting, using the same budget as we have in '22. If you look on page four, I'll just hit, like for the golf department, I need to get a little bit of clear understanding from Bobby, just to make sure if we're replacing greens, are we gonna shut anything down? Is membership gonna go down? I know that's been some issues. I may have to adjust some of those numbers. But, you know, there's just a few that I'll, we may still have to adjust. Do y'all have any more, any questions on this? I mean, and please just, you know, shoot me a message or call me too if you have any.
Council President, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
The revenue projections look pretty good, although I'm a little bit afraid of them. But, you know, if you cut it back a little bit, but rather than do that, something else I was thinking of that's been on my mind a lot lately is that we've had a lot of unbudgeted expenses, especially lately, I mean, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I'd like to see us maybe have a contingency fund in the budget that we can pull from.
Ironically, mentioned that about 30 minutes ago to the mayor.
You're a smart guy, Jimmy.
So I suggested we do the same, because we've been seeing those numbers pop in. Yep.
Yeah. We have two unbudgeted projects that came up? Yeah, the two things, yeah. And they were smaller than, say, the road falling in.
Put it all as.
A month ago, it was, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. But that week alone, we had $330,000 in unbudgeted expenses. We had $250,000 in that one meeting, and then $83,000 or $84,000 in the next meeting.
Million-dollar contingency in line was probably where we wind up? Is that a little high? Is it realistic?
Well, it's probably realistic, but it's high. It's high, but it's realistic.
Yep.
And we don't want to train our people to think that they have that slush fund to fall back on either.
And if you remember, at the last of the last year, it was probably one of the last meetings, we moved 750,000 from the general fund, because we knew revenues were good, and we moved that into our capital projects fund. So some of these projects that has come unbudgeted, I've noted on there that we had access, that we moved into that fund. And that's what that capital project fund is supposed to be for. And that's where, you know, at times, it was half of the sales tax went there, or quarter of that sales tax went there, for future capital projects. So that's, you know, a good practice to continue, is to be able to see if we see our year's doing good right there at the end, is to move that cash over for those future projects.
And what about raising our rainy day fund?
Up limit?
We've talked about that for years. We haven't needed it to be so high for many years, but if there was a time to do it, we might want to, we could raise that ceiling by $500,000.
We had talked about having a plan to incrementally get it up to around 10 million, I think.
Might be a year to start putting that in.
The other reason is, when we did not use it during the tally, for instance, the interest rates were so low, you made more money on leaving it in there, making interest off the money there than you did borrowing the money.
We can, we could.
Probably see that again.
Count on that next few years.
No, I don't think so.
We can transfer.
Unique.
Right now, we have excess in reserves, but it's unrestricted and be able to move, you know, if on the next meeting, if that's what you want me to bring, is to move a million dollars of that reserve from, right now, it's unrestricted, to restricted, is putting it in the rainy day fund.
I'd be good with that.
I definitely want to take a look at that.
Yeah, and I can go back and also calculate what I would say is 20% of your revenues, look at what that amount would be, to make sure our reserves is set high enough to cover, to make sure that we have 20% sitting in that restricted fund.
I think, yeah, beef it up by whatever, and then maybe have a contingency. I'm just gonna say a number, 5% to 10%. 10% is a pretty darn loose budget. 5% is a little tighter, but.
I mean, a 5% contingency would be even higher than, I think the numbers I threw out, right?
Oh, you were saying a million dollars. Maybe that'd be less than 5%.
Yeah.
Yeah. 2%, 3% maybe. Something.
All right. Okay. Sound good?
Any other questions? And you also have there is your financials. You know, in finance department, we've been a little behind and short-staffed, and I was out for a little bit. So you have your April and your May financials there on your desk right there. So if you run through any questions on that, please let us know, me or Islyn.
Or we, I do have one other question. You've probably touched on this recently, Mayor. Just refresh our memory. How are we doing on filling open positions right now? Are we behind budgetary spending because of unfilled positions? Are we catching up in some of these departments? As I think of having budget, maybe windfalls, you know, I think about, you know, adding people to departments that we've been maybe lean on, but I think we've at least got enough positions funded. They may not be filled, though.
And we still are seeing some positions that are going unfilled. I'm happy to report that the planning staff is completely filled as of today. Hunter filled his last.
Did you knock over Neeran's?
But we, I mean, there are positions that aren't filled. I mean, and obviously, we just have turnover. That's one of the reasons why we're proposing what we're proposing with the salaries, to try to, you know, have some retention. But, I mean, for the most part, I mean, we are under budget some in salaries, because we have unfilled positions, but some of that's just gonna continue to happen. You have positions that you fill, positions that are vacant.
Right, okay. Yes, ma'am. Was that it?
That was it. Anything else, Mayor?
No, I think the other thing I really want y'all to think about is there's projects that haven't been done, that y'all would like to see done, things that we can make sure are included in the budget. They may already be included in the budget in capital improvements, but again, if there are things that y'all would like to see in this next year, we'd like to have your input on that as well.
And we had had a conversation about approximately a million dollars' worth of project, about 10 to 15 projects.
We did.
Various sizes.
Yes.
Would that be something you were trying to get done between now and the end of the year with excess funds, or something that you would put into the budget for the next cycle?
We actually talked about doing that with some excess funds. And that was, you know, Blueberry Lane was included in that, the golf course, the going ahead and rehabbing those tennis courts to pickleball courts, some of that kind of stuff. Those were the, and that was, I think, close to about $800,000, $900,000 was that total, one that I gave to y'all last meeting. Bricking the visitor side of the stadium. I have exact figures on that now. So if you want that information to come back before you, we can do that. But those are all things that we had talked about, because we had some excess revenue, that, you know, projects that were, you know, impactful to the community, things that I think that the council would like to see, that we would, we could move forward on those. And we would bring, they would obviously all have to come back to the council for approval.
Right.
And if you'd like for us to start doing that, we can. And if funds are available, we can tell you where they're coming from. If you'd like to see those, we can. We can start doing that.
I think that'd be good. Council, do y'all have any opinion on that?
I think that the golf was way overestimated on that. Some other things that I can just think of that may need to be undertaken in the semi-near future would be potentially dredging of the marina at the pier.
Right.
You know, council, we continue to talk to the people that are interested in taking over that lease from Mr. Gambino. I can't reveal any details on that, but, you know, we're continuing to look at that, and it may require some improvements. And then also, the Fairhope docks, I still want to, you know, think, consider some, you know, getting that project underway. It's been on the books for a while.
Do you want us to pull that? That was never officially approved by the council. I'm happy to pull those conceptuals back out and let everybody look at those again and see what direction you would like to direct us in.
Yeah, I'd like to look at it again.
Yeah, I think we need to bring that back.
And the clock corner, is that going, could you put that in this budget year?
It's in this year.
It is in this budget year.
It will, and it should. Richard probably can give us an update on that, but it should happen pretty quickly.
And then, I mean, two big ones that I know we've got large grant money associated with, but the.
The Triangle.
Triangle, and the K-1 Center.
Right, and the K-1 Center, and the Alley Project. Those are all things that I said, you know, we haven't, the RFQ was, we evaluated the RFQ on the Triangle, so that should be coming back pretty quick with the design phase of that. And so we don't know what that's gonna look like. We have a million dollars from Gomesa. And then, of course, the Alleyway Project, that's with the MPO right now, and with Federal Highway to approve that. That could come back. And then the, and then the K-1 Center. And we do have the money budgeted, you know, the match for that grant, but we obviously have been, if we get the grant, we've already been awarded that. So that's another, you know, $700,000, $650,000, I think.
And the grant, were we anticipating hearing something in June?
We should hear, and we're, we're right here, they said four to six weeks, and four to six weeks is now. So in the next two to three weeks, we should hear something.
We might want to put a, we might want to think about, and I'm just, you know, a skeleton budget now, but putting some money to the side for K-1 that inevitably will come along, and we could start saving now for it. You know, I know that we're talking about trying to go out and raise money among the city and, you know, hip the government and, you know, grant opportunities, but there's still inevitably gonna be some money coming out of the city coffers. It may be a good time to put $250,000.
Well, we have that $650,000 that we budgeted, and we know we got the match already from Congressman Carl for that grant, if we get it. So that's $650,000 that's in the budget currently, that we could, you know, put to the side for the K-1 Center also, so.
Can we do that? Kim, can we do that legally? You know, I've always heard government in, government out. You know, what you collect, you have to spend, but can you put that money that you received, or any excess money for a future project such as that?
You can. I mean, it's no different than what y'all have in the resolution to move sales tax for future projects.
But you could designate it for one specific project?
And you just, you can just roll that over. I mean, that's basically what you're doing. You're just gonna roll it over from one year to the next.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can, I mean, that's basically, you're setting it up restricted. When you move it into that capital projects fund, that capital projects fund has a specific definition on how that money can be used, you know, for those type of projects.
And, I mean, I may be getting us off track, but roundabouts in the budget?
Roundabout, yeah. And that's the roundabout, you're talking about the one at the floral clock?
I am.
Right.
Triangle Drive.
Right, Triangle Drive.
Triangle Drive.
Triangle Drive.
I almost said 104.
104. That project, and then, again, where there's going to be, you know, we'll have some other things. The track at Founder's will be coming, you know, we have that engineering done, so that's gonna be going out for bid. So there's quite a few projects that we know that could, you know, probably, in this day and time, unfortunately, will probably cost a little extra money.
And then another, I mean, getting way down the road, probably not, it's probably not the right place to bring it up, but the Performing Arts Center potentially down the road, and then at some point, we've got to also think about addressing.
That's what I'm thinking. When I say K-1, that's what I'm talking about.
And at some point, we need to think about addressing the Civic Center.
Yes, because when you see the budget this year.
I don't like spending money on.
On buildings that we know don't have the, well, we don't know that you have the life expectancy that we anticipate too, so, yeah. That's some of the things that we're, we're gonna need to talk about, you know, have those hard conversations during the budget, and come up with a five-year plan for ourselves, capital plan, and what that looks like.
Yeah. Lot going on.
Yeah, but if y'all put it together, a list of priorities, of project priorities, that'd really help us too, fitting those in, you know, finding the home and the money.
Anything come to mind that we didn't just cover?
Better get everything approved before Cory and Jay get back in here.
All right. Thank you, Kim.
And I'll put out an email to all the council members too, asking just for their, you know, to Cory and Jay too, since they're not here, asking for their input on any projects they would like to see.
All right. And next work session, what will we be covering?
The next work session that we'll be covering, we're gonna be covering capital projects.
Capital projects, okay.
So we'll bring those to y'all as well.
We'll address this in good detail.
And, Council President, you did say you want us those, that list of projects that we presented last time, you want us to start bringing those back individually?
If you don't mind.
We can do that. Letting you know where the funding's gonna come from?
I would like to start seeing some movement on that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
If my fellow council members are on board with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Next item up, discuss the proposed City of Fairhope Safety Handbook.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know we sent the handbook to you already. I don't know if y'all had a chance to review or had any questions. I did want to touch a little bit on a little background on how we got here. And in our employee handbook, it does have a section for safety rules and procedures, but we've actually never had a standalone document addressing safety policies. And before I got in the position of safety coordinator, the Personnel Board actually started this process. So once I did get in this position, and with the assistance of the Personnel Board, I do thank, and my immediate supervisor Cory Pierce, gotta give him a shout out, we were able to get the safety handbook moving forward at that point. And this final draft, I did have sent out to all department heads, and have received only positive feedback, no corrections, suggestions. So with that, come to the council today for adoption of the safety handbook.
For adoption today?
Not adoption today. This is just for review on the work session, and then we put on the council agenda next time.
I was just saying, I hadn't seen.
This is Donnie's first time.
Apologize.
No worries, no worries. I just hadn't seen that. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. All right. I have not had a chance to review that yet. Council members, Kevin, have you reviewed that through the Personnel Board?
With the Personnel Board, we have. We went over, actually went over pretty well in a couple of meetings on fine tuning, and I wish we could have proved it today. I think it's that good.
Okay. And I'm assuming, you know, some primary goals, just trying to obviously improve the safety of our employees, but reduce workman's comp, reduce accidents, reduce other on-the-job issues. Councilman Burrell, have you had a chance to review that?
I have not reviewed all. I do have a question about just safety training in general. I know there's a lot of, there's subscription services that you can go out to, and employees, depending on what your job is, can be assigned various training activities. How engaged are we in that right now?
We're actually working on CDL training right now. The new policies, federal guidelines are coming.
Okay.
So we got that in the works.
How about just, you know, there's, and I can't even, there's 1,000 different safety subjects, like I said, depending on, you know, your task, everything from literally climbing a ladder to driving a forklift. So are we, you know, following any formal training regime for the people that are tasked with doing things like that?
We've got a few training procedures we're working on right now, but nothing in the works just yet.
I guess that's what I would see as a weakness of the city, is to work on, you know, certain job descriptions, have to go through certain mandatory types of training. I know that I have to do it in my job. I took classes all day today, literally sat in front of a computer screen. And, you know, and they're short, they're 30, modules are maybe 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, and at the end, you take a quiz, have to pass the quiz to complete the course, and just turn that into your supervisor. And I, you know, not everybody should have to take it, but there's certainly jobs within this city, I think, that need to be taken. And at one time, when we had the guy, what was his name, Mayor? Safety?
Safety Plus?
Safety Plus. I thought we were starting to undertake those courses then, so I don't know what the status of that is.
So I will tell you that, I mean, a lot of that's department-specific. So there is training, like, for the electric department, and for the gas department, and the water department, training that they do internally for their departments. There's chainsaw safety, those kind of things that our employees are doing.
Okay.
There is not a set schedule of when people have to do those classes, because it is done department, by each department. That's probably something we need to work on as a whole, and say, you know, what training's being offered in what department. But it is very departmentalized, it's not the city as a whole.
Sure. I was thinking it would be departmental.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing. We do not, currently, we're not using Safety Plus that I'm aware of. We haven't used them since I have taken office. If that's something that we want to look at again, I think Donnie would be happy to do that, as well as myself, and look at that. But again, we are doing training with our employees, but it's more departmentalized than it is the city as a whole. The things that we do as city as a whole is, I think, some of y'all came to the meeting What the things that we do as a city as a whole is, um, I think some of y'all came to the meeting that we did about, um, you know, harassment and bullying, those kind of things. We do that kind of training, ethics training, those kind of things, but everything else really department-specific, correct, correct. And we, we're trying to do those things citywide every year, just to remind folks of the policies.
Should be an annual compliance.
Yeah, of the policies, correct.
I think just from a liability standpoint as well, you know, we need to, to be able to show that we're training our employees and, and all of that. And I know that's kinda getting away from safety, but, uh, it's kinda all tied in the same.
This is definitely a step in the right direction.
Yeah, it's just a step in, you know, and I consider telling you all the courses, but just every Department Head should have a good idea of the six or eight courses that their employees need to take. And there's probably, like I said, there's some, you know, online service that we can subscribe to, and, you know, the person can do it, you know, at their own pace, but maybe within a certain amount of time. Usually, an employee will say, you know, you need to do this within thirty days.
Well, and for instance, like last meeting, y'all approved the, the Electric Department's training contract. So, again, everybody, they're doing it, this is departmentalized. It's not the city as a whole. But the other thing too is, um, one thing that speaks volumes, and Michael Johnson and Donnie have both, you know, contributed to this, is because we're investigating every accident that we have. We have, you know, dropped our workman's comp bonus $300,000 in, um, in just since 2020. Um, so, which is huge. Um, it's been a, a great feather in the cap to the employees and to safety and the Department Heads for, you know, instilling in those employees how important it is and the impact it has on our bottom line when we have accidents.
So, I wanna speak to the employees on that for a minute. Just, just remember that when you prevent accidents and you prevent those costs to the city, and those costs not, not, not only due to damages that may be caused by accidents, but due to rising insurance premiums because, you know, our workman's comp policy goes up, you know, all that money, you know, goes into the budget, and a lot of that money goes into our, our biggest expense, which is salaries and payroll. And, and, and so, everybody, you know, has some skin in the game in preventing these accidents. We wanna be able to reward everybody with good pay, and that's just one component to being able to do it.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilman Boone, Burrell? Thank you very much. Oh, yes, ma'am.
There are also, um, videos and training courses through our insurance companies also.
Also included.
Risk loss management.
Yes, thank you for that, yeah.
Well, I wasn't anticipating us getting through the budget that fast, but, um, now, committee updates, Councilman Burrell?
I, um, missed the Airport Authority Meeting last week, but I know that, um, we, uh, you know, we have a, a new Realtor, and we're looking at ways to market that property on the west side of the airport. And I know that I'm going to meet with the Realtor this week, and, uh, we're just trying to establish, um, some strategy for, for marketing that land. I think the prior Realtor had marketed that as one large parcel, and we, we think it should be marketed as, you know, multiple parcels. Need to, we need, we've been saying this for years, we need to get that, need to get that moving. And I think, uh, I missed the, uh, the Rec Department had a special call meeting last week, which I missed, and there's some, um, there's some action on tonight's agenda related to that, as it, as it relates to a forming, a formation of a recreational soccer league. And you might say, what do you mean? We don't have a recreational soccer league? Well, most of the soccer in the city's been run by club soccer for many years, so. Those are my committee reports.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, we had a Personnel Board meeting last week that went over bringing the, uh, Safety Handbook up to us. And then, we have a Harbor Board meeting on July 13th at, uh, 4:30. Soon it's gonna be in the same place as Delshent's room.
Okay.
Jimmy, I can go back, actually, to another. Uh, we did have an AMEA Board Meeting last week as well, and I just wanna give everybody a heads up, no, no surprise. You know, natural gas is used to generate most of the electricity that we buy. You know, natural gas prices have spiked considerably over the last several months, so people shouldn't be surprised to see their electric bills go up considerably. AMEA is, uh, trying to, uh, keep costs under control. You know, we own a power plant, and we, we peak shave, which means we're billed on the highest thirty-minute average over the course of about three years. Whatever that usage is, is what sets our rates. And so, we turn on our power plant to generate our own power to keep our peaks down. But even with that, with this extreme heat drought that we had the past few weeks, we're very concerned with what that peak usage is going to, to turn out to be. We had record heat in many places throughout the state, so, uh, just be prepared for, um, it's only in the area of our fuel. There's a lot of components that go into the cost of electricity, but the fuel charges will, will be going up considerably, and, and that will be passed on to, to our customers. Uh, but, but AMEA is taking steps to try to mitigate that expenses as, to as minimal as, as possible. Something else that came up was, uh, supply chain issues. And we are not a buying group as a whole. You know, there are eleven member cities in AMEA, but I've been pushing, uh, the Board, uh, to ask the staff to hold a, a me, a meeting, maybe a summit of the member cities. Uh, all the Board Members are maybe not always the, the people that need to be involved in that meeting, but we may need the Mayor, say, as Head of Utilities, and our Electric Department Supervisor to meet with the other Utility Depart, uh, Utility Heads and Electric Department Heads to maybe come together and see if we can form an alliance so that we can create, um, relationships with these companies that supply things that are in, that have lead times of sometimes one to two years now. Because I think that Riviera Utilities, which is part of the AMEA and Fairhope Utilities, because of our proximity to the coast, it concerns me that if we have a, if we have a storm and we need components, how long it may take us to get components. So, we really need to act on this. So, I've asked AMEA to look at this. We need to look at dates and times to meet and have a summit and see if we can come to common ground. But the problem with buying components for so many different electrical grids is, um, not everybody needs the same type of components. Not everybody's running at the same voltage. Uh, we don't have the same size transformers. We don't have the, maybe the same size pole-mounted transformers. So, there are some logistical challenges, but if we don't sit down and discuss it and see if we can come up to a solution, you know, there's a chance we'd regret it in the future.
All right, thank you. Um, would you like to give an update from MPO, or would you like to save that for the, maybe, the regular council meeting?
I can save that for a regular council meeting.
Thank you. Um, Library Board, um, Library was here at our last meeting, and of course, they're in fundraising mode for, uh, renovation of the upstairs project, and it looks like it's gonna be really nice. So, if you have an opportunity and wanna drop by the Library, I'm sure they'd be glad to, glad to tell you about what they have in mind. We don't have Councilman Martin Robinson in here at the moment, so we will move on to, uh, Department Head Updates, and we can go ahead and cover the agenda at the same time, so. And I can, I can run down the agenda, or we can go around the room, however y'all wanna go. Hunter, I'll just start, I guess, with you. I've got, I know I've got a couple, uh, items on the agenda from you, but you fully staffed?
Fully staffed. First time I've experienced that in my three, oh, three years next month.
Congratulations.
I'm happy and excited to, uh, to experience that for a little while. I do have the first item on my, on the agenda is a second reading of a change made to hotels and bed and breakfast. We did discuss that last council meeting, so this is the final reading for adoption. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them here. And then, the second was the site plan. Uh, it's actually an extension. So, this is, uh, the project at Spence McCowen. Y'all are familiar with that project. The site plan's actually expiring, um, with supply chain, with everything else coming up. So, just seeking an extension of that. It's customary. We've kinda had a question.
When we do extensions, is, is six months standard, or?
Yes, we did, we, um, I think we even put a date.
You did.
This extension is a hundred, 190-day extension that expires January 8th, 2023.
I just didn't know if six or 12 was the standard, so.
Hunter, did that go before planning and zoning to request that extension, or did that only come to the council?
Site plan is ultimately approved to plan through the council, so we don't send it back through all the process when an extension is in place. The only time we do that's on final or preliminary plat approval, where they're the final authority.
Did they, or will they tonight give their reasons for requesting that extension?
Uh, if, if here, it's certainly up to them to answer that. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Just coming back from vacation, so I, I haven't talked to, uh, the applicant in, in a week and a half, so I didn't get a chance to talk to them today, so I don't know if they'll be here.
And I've got one other, uh, site plan that's being proposed as a walk-on. I think, I think they sent it in, and we just, it just wasn't on the agenda, but it was, um, for, and, and so that would be down at the back, item number fifteen?
It's Alpha Care. It is an existing PUD. Um, I don't know if y'all are familiar with Gafer, uh, Greeno Professional PUD. It is a single-tenant building. It's our, kind of a dock-in-the-box, Alpha Care is the name. So, the, eh, the PUD required mandatory site plan review, so you will see that. We do have slides, and then being asked to walk that on.
Is that like the southeast quadrant of Greeno and, uh, and Gafer?
That is just north of Plantation, so, um, you know, familiar, we're kind, uh, I know Jade Engineering's office is in that part.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Trustmark, Jade.
Exactly, yeah. There's another bank, kinda Centennial.
Centennial, yeah.
I believe is in that part.
Okay.
Yes. I believe this is the last one.
Why is this being walked on as opposed to waiting for the meeting?
Um, I, I think the understanding is that the.
It was sent to me in June, June 16th, and it just got left off.
It was what now?
It was left off by mistake.
Just left off by mistake?
Just accidental. But they delivered it in a timely manner?
Yes, they did.
They did, okay.
So, Hunter, let me ask you this. Do you see any reason why we shouldn't consider this tonight?
This, this, this meets everything. There's only one condition. The use is, uh, is as a clinic has to be approved, but that's the only condition that they actually do their schedule for Board of Adjustment. We are recommending approval of that use. Uh, don't see anything. There's, there were, I think, in your packet, no, not in your packet, on the slides, you'll see two conditions that are stricken. Um, they've rectified those, some minor things at Planning Commission, and they've already clarified that. So, I really don't see, uh, any contention with this project.
Okay.
I see that this PUD goes all the way back to, am I seeing this correctly?
Yes.
2002?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and there's actually a lot of.
Sometimes it takes time to build it out.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you, sir.
You have any other, anything else, so?
No, any, any other questions, Your Honor? All right, thanks, sir. Next on, item on the agenda is gonna be, uh, the water emergency. And basically, council, we've got, um, we already have in place an ordinance that addresses, um, water emergency in different phases. We've got three phases. What, what we were requesting here is to go ahead and, and declare a water emergency, and then, uh, it would authorize the Mayor to, to monitor those triggers. And once one of those triggers is, is reached, um, she would implement the different phases. And basically, it's at an eighty percent, a ninety percent, and a hundred percent of our capacity for seven consecutive days. So, that's the Phase One, Two, and, and Three. So, all this would be doing is rolling out our already-approved ordinance, and the Mayor and, uh, Jason would probably monitor usage and see if, if any of the triggers are, are achieved. Is there anything you would like to add in a little more detail about that?
So, one thing I just wanna say about that is, so, you know, last week, obviously, we got a lot of criticism for the, um, water conservation ordinance. We did see, obviously, very high temperatures, um, rain for a, a longer period of time than we're typical, than we typically see. And so, we were pulling down on our tanks. It was causing some low water pressure. It was calling, causing some brown water. We did, on last Monday, reach nine million gallons of usage, which our, um, you know, our capacity is somewhere between 9.2 and 9.3 million gallons. Um, we did put a copy of, um, that ordinance as it is defined on everybody. We started putting those on everybody's trash cans, because we got a lot of comments that, well, not everybody has social media, not everybody watches the news, so that people don't know what it means when you're asking them to voluntarily conserve water or what the next phase means. So, we're trying to educate everybody about that. I do think that we're fine right now staying in the voluntary phase. Um, people have listened to what we've said, thankfully, and I appreciate them doing that. But over the weekend, we saw, um, we saw eight million gallons on Friday, then eight point four, and then, I think, yesterday, we were actually down to seven, seven million gallons. So, we, we have seen a decrease, um, not as many, you know, people are conserving like we've asked, so that has worked really well. Also, our crews have been out riding around. They see people irrigating during the middle of the day. They're trying to take time to stop and educate them about why that's not a good thing to do. So, we've also reduced the hours of the splash pad from ten to four. It's also been a good opportunity for us to look at our practices as a city and reevaluate those and see things that we can do better, possibly putting a holding tank in, you know, a storage tank for the, um, splash pad, or looking at ways we can use the affluent from the treatment plant to be able to water our flowers here. So, things that we're doing also, and practices that we're looking at, that I think are, you know, good, just good overall environmental practices and things that we can do. And I applaud Jason and his team, 'cause it was very stressful last week. They started, immediately jumped on looking for those ways that we could conserve as a city. And, um, you know, again, thank you to the citizens who listened to our pleas and, um, you know, participated in that conservation along with us.
And, and just a few other things to, um, to put out there. You know, some of the golf courses, I think Quail Creek is, is irrigated from the ponds on-site, and that's something that you, you see a lot of people react, react to, and just wanna clear up any rumors or misconceptions about that.
The fountain has reclaimed water. Um, we had, you know, about the fountain at the pier. The Duck Pond is a well. You see that water flowing, that's a well. Um, so anyway, there, there were different things that we were able to put out information on, but yeah, a lot of misinformation. And again, it's not a matter of not having enough water at the source. It's the size of the pipes that we have in the ground and being able to carry that water and push it out. And again, right, and we are working on that. We continue to work on that every day, you know, all the time when we're doing these upgrade, we do these projects, we're increasing the size of pipes in the ground. So, it's not something that we didn't know that we need to do. We are working on those wells. We are working on pipes. Um, you know, we get a lot of criticism because of the growth that we're seeing, and things continue to be approved. Well, Councilman Burrell just called out that was, that PUD was approved in 2002. Um, I mean, there are a lot of things on the books, and we said this when we put the moratorium in place. There are a lot of things on the books that haven't been built out, that you would probably even not, not even noticed that we had a moratorium, because there were so many things that still needed to be built out. And, and unfortunately, that's what we're seeing. Um, there, you know, we do have the moratorium. There are things that we have said no to, but again, you know, there are things that were already there that were approved that we just can't now come up and say, no, you can't do it, so. And we are holding developers' feet to the fire, making them contribute to these projects and upsize our pipes and do things that benefit not only their development, but our system as well.
And may I ask you to, to say some of this again at, at the regular meeting?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
In case there's additional people watching, but, um, I appreciate you going into, into some detail on that.
And I can recite that probably in my sleep, 'cause I recited it so much last week.
You said it a few times?
Yes, just a few times. Every radio, every TV station at least twice, so, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna, uh, reiterate, Council President, that because we're, if we declare an emergency, you know, we could've had these rules on the books without declaring an emergency. We could just have these triggers in place at any time. It just prevents us from having to declare it, you know, in between meetings. The triggers are what they are. And because we were at seven million gallons on Sunday, I believe you said, I mean, the clock would start back at day one. And as long as we continue to get these showers, and the temperatures are ten, twelve degrees less than they were last week, and they're more seasonal, I'm not gonna say we're not gonna get, you know, close to being in a danger zone, but we, we definitely got a lot of relief from, from, from other nature.
Yeah, I think we had five days in a row over a hundred. That'll, that'll put you in a tough spot.
And I heard, you know, historically, they were giving some stats on TV, and historically, we have not seen, there's only five times in history that we've seen three consecutive days over a hundred degrees. So, I mean, if that gives you any indication of where we were, and just think of, you know, I mean, no telling how long ago that was. So, a lot of change since we've seen it before. And 2012 was the last time we saw a hundred-degree temperatures, so. A lot's changed since then.
Jason, did you wanna add anything to that? Are you good? All right. Good job, Mayor. He said you didn't need to say anything else. Um, next item up is, uh, on, on the. Next item up is on, on the agenda would be item number eight. This is for a TAP grant, and this would be for sidewalks between Blue Island and Fairwood. Mr. Johnson?
Hopefully, in my absence on vacation two weeks ago, it was covered well enough at the work session. I will tell you that we have captured the match as well as engineering and the proposed budget that you will see. So we have at least planned for that expense if we are awarded the grant. Also, if there's no questions on, on that item, I have the, I can answer any on number nine, which is a replacement of a pipe system there at the municipal stadium. Again, encountered a sinkhole and it turned out to be, again, corrugated metal pipe that's timed to be replaced. And then on, on item 10, we undertook a pretty big drainage project on Creek Drive, and unfortunately, it got a little bigger than we originally planned. And so the cut was beyond what we could, after repair, a replacement of the drainage that we can do the asphalt patch, and, and it's just something we need to outsource to, to put that road completely back together. We did want it to weather for a few months to make sure that we didn't have any settlement, and it's really performed well. And if you're not familiar with that area, there was standing water always in the road there. We have actually dried that area out for the first time in my career here. So we're, we're very happy with the drainage results. We just now need to finish off the roadway. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on those three items that fall under my purview.
Well, I know nine and 10 are unbudgeted, but I mean, the sinkhole, that's just something you can't really help. And then the other, I've been down there enough times, I know exactly the, the challenges you're facing there. And I don't think there's any way to, to not have that section paved and repaired. But any idea how many areas around town, we've got the same corrugated pipe? I mean, this is two in a short amount of time. How often do you think this is going to be an issue for you?
It's been a pretty regular part of our life and, and just the life maintenance of our drainage system. As you know, we were awarded a VP grant for a complete inventory. So when that is complete, we'll know the answer to that question, how much is out there? You know, as you recall, we did a small drainage project on, on fails and on pecan. It's the same thing. It's corrugated pipe that had failed. And so that's just, it's just part of, it's part of our maintenance scheme, you know? When it's shallow and on the side of the road, it's pretty easy. When it's, when it's deep or under the road, it can be problematic. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Mr. Johnson, the Bancroft Street repair looks really good. One of the smoothest streets in town now.
It does.
They got on it and got it done quick. Fortunately, it didn't rain for three weeks, so they had good weather.
And, and I had a call late, and we're, they're finalizing numbers, and I don't really want to be too exact, but I think you'll very, be very pleased at how under budget that project has come in on, on all accounts, engineering as well as construction.
Yeah, I was not anticipating them accomplishing that in the timeframe they had projected.
Well, they, they, they did a very good job. And if I could, just give you a couple of updates. And Councilman Burrell, you'd asked Mr. Gryas a question, and I'll just share with you. You know, we're very fortunate for our department. We are a member of the American Public Works Association, which offers a whole bunch of training visionettes that we participate in through video trainings and things of that nature. Very fortunate that Aldott offers programs for our employees at no cost, such as flagger training, temporary traffic control. We send groups every year to that. Believe it or not, private companies like United Rentals, they offer training programs for very minimal costs, like $25 a head. And I know recently, we've done confined spaces with them as well as trench excavation training. And then through the Auburn Continued Education out at, out at the extension program there, we just got through with the chainsaw safety. And it's, it's pretty intense. It's one day of classroom, and then it's one day actually with chainsaws in your hand, learning the proper safety protocols. So we do take advantage of a lot of resources out there that, that costs very little money that yields a lot of good training programs. So, and I think all the different departments all have interconnections to trade organizations in their industry that offers those same things.
Do you turn in all those certifications to our Workman's Comp Insurance Company and things like that? I don't know if you have to, maybe you have to do it after the fact that there's an accident, but does it help to do it before the fact, maybe to get a better rating or better rates or? Can you add?
I know that every certification, we make sure we get a copy and it goes in the employee file. So at least that there's a documentation that if something came up in the future, hey, has he been trained on this? We can say, yep, on this date, at this time, he had, he had safety training in this area. So, and, and just kind of update, I think you'll probably be sick of me in, in the first meeting of July, because I think, I tend to run in cycles, but I think you will be seeing probably the alley project. You'll be seeing the Gaffer Avenue turn lane improvements. Hopefully, you'll be seeing the contract for the engineering on the roundabout. I know y'all have already authorized the not to exceed negotiation. And probably the biggest thing that's important to me is you will probably be seeing the debris removal contract for our hurricane or disaster, as well as debris monitoring contract at the first meeting in July as well. And I can report that I think we had about five respondents to each, so five debris contractors as well as five qualifying debris monitoring. And we, we've put together a team with Treasury and Public Works and sanitation to review those and hopefully have a recommendation. I would love to tell you that the unit prices went down, but the best I can tell, they're significantly more expensive than what we paid in Sally's. So hopefully, we will identify the firm that will give us the, the best service there. Any questions?
Sounds like you're going to be busy in July.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is going to be Government and Economic Development Institute, the Auburn Personnel Review. Mayor, would that be you? The salaries, the comp increases?
I'm going to cover this because Cory is, is out. But, and I think we've talked about this probably at length, but again, you know, for the past couple of years, we've talked about the Auburn study and the compensation study. They, they did the compensation study comparing us to cities our like size, looking at our job descriptions, doing an overhaul of job descriptions. That is complete. Lisa, Kim, Cory, his staff, the personnel board has been very instrumental in doing that. So really happy to have that behind us. What we are doing now is we are making a proposal that we, we give the increases recommended by Auburn to that minimum stand, from a minimum standpoint, to the employees that they recommended that for, or the job positions they recommended that for, a 5% across the board to all employees, full-time, part-time, and seasonal. And then a dollar to any general government employee who makes less than $15 after the 5%. And a dollar to any utility employee who makes less than $18 after the 5%. I do want to clarify that that is not bringing people up to $18 or $15. It's just getting them closer to that mark with the dollar increase. Dollar increases will not be given to seasonal employees or any part-time employee who has not been employed more than, or has been employed less than five years. The total impact of that on our budget, the Auburn and, the Auburn recommendations will be a $94,000 impact to our budget annually. The dollar increase will be $12,000. And then the overall, the 5% will be about $875,000 impact to the budget annually. On an annual basis. For the rest of this budget year, it's $236,000.
So counsel, all these adjustments are effectively just under $1 million annually on their impact?
For the rest of this budget year, the 5% increase is $236,000?
That's correct. That's based on seven pay periods left, if we, if it's in the July 15 paycheck. Yes, sir.
So what is that annualized?
Eight hundred.
Eight seventy-six.
Yeah. $876,000.
So that's $900,000 for annualized for all of it?
Yes, sir. Correct.
There goes that contingency.
Again, I do, I do want to mention that, I mean, I do think this is important, something that for us to retain employees. I think that, you know, we've talked about it quite a bit. You know, our neighboring cities are bringing their minimum to $15 an hour. Spanish Fort's already done that. Gulf Shores, you know, looking at utility employees, $19 an hour as a minimum. So, and when employees can't afford to live in Fairhope, they have to travel to their job anyway. We are losing employees to, of course, the private sector because they can pay more than government, but even to other government entities because they are all increasing their, their, their pay for employees.
So just for some simple math, let's say you're a city general government employee, $10 an hour, you're going to go to $10.50 plus a dollar, you'll be at $11.50?
If you're a full-time employee.
If you're a full-time employee.
Right.
And if you're utility, already at 15, you'd get a 75 cent plus a dollar, so you'd go from 15 to 16, 75.
Correct. If you're a utility employee. And the dollar increase, basically, there's 23 employees after that 5% that will receive that dollar increase. So we weren't, you know, we weren't, that wasn't too bad.
So a lot of them will-
They were. They were already, because we did, we did the, the way we calculated it was whatever Auburn recommended, we did that first. Then we did the 5%, then we did the dollar. Because Auburn told us what everybody should be making, we felt like everybody should get the 5%. And then if you were still under that amount, then you would get the dollar.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the mayor while she's up here on that? That's, we have talked about it at length. There's a lot of numbers.
And you have, you have this in your, in your packet on the back of the resolution that gives you those dollar figures. You also have the compensation study pay grades, the current, what Auburn recommended, and also the previous compensation. So you can look at that and compare those if you'd like to.
In your $15 example, you said 16, 75, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Any other questions?
What does that, what does that amount to? What does that amount to, though? Let's see, that'd be a dollar.
I mean, $1.75 times 2,080 is, is close to $4,000 a year.
$1.75 divided by 15.
2080, or times 2080?
2080.
That's almost a 12% raise.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that, I mean, that should be noticeable to people.
There are going to be some of those employees that after the 5%, they're making like 15, 20, or 15, 50. You know, I talked with several of the department heads about that. There was only a handful of those employees. But again, those are things that we will look at in the budget year, and they'll, you know, maybe they'll be, their job will increase because of a merit increase. And I really think that, you know, puts some accountability on the employee when you're looking at merit increases versus just those across the board like we've been doing because they are performance-based. So, and we also talked to the personnel board at the last personnel board meeting about coming up with some good, you know, information for all the department heads about evaluations and how, you know, how those merit increases will work. So we're going to do some training prior to the budget year as well.
Well, I think it's a good, a good move by city to do that.
Yeah.
I know that, I know the cost of living's gone up dramatically in a short amount of time. That won't hopefully continue at that rate, and we're doing what we can to get caught up with it, I guess.
Right. And I appreciate, and I know the employees appreciate y'all considering this. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. The next item I've got is a resolution regarding soccer, recreational, and intramural activities. Who would be the point person on this? I've got some questions.
Cory probably would be the point person. He's not here right now. I spoke to him, and I spoke to at least one member of the REC board earlier today. We can have this conversation. I have kind of some mixed emotions about this.
I, I, I think we can, we can have it now. We can have it again when Cory's present as well. But I mean, do you want to put this one up? Maybe come back to this at the end?
We got time to talk about it now. I mean, we're, we don't have anything else to talk about, right?
We've got a short agenda. Not really.
Unless we have department head reports, more department head reports. But I, I'll just jump off in it if you don't mind.
Go, go ahead.
And I want to hear the mayor's comments, too. But, you know, for the longest time, we've been, you know, trying to come to an agreement with the, the Fairhope, the BLAST Soccer League. And, you know, there were some legal issues that we had to get through, and I think they're pulling, paying full RAC rate. And then they have what they call, you know, their, their youth league, which is a part of that. So if we have this REC league, it's going to compete, I think, with maybe that youth league. So part of me says, well, what is that going to do to, to, to that player development and to those children? But at the same time, we may have kids that don't want to be a part of BLAST, that may want to just be strictly in the REC league. I don't know how many kids that that would entail. Is that going to be 25, or is that going to be, I'll throw a number, 200? Probably going to fall somewhere in there, you know? So, and then I, I also wonder, are there barriers to kids playing with the private clubs such as expenses? I know they give scholarships to people that maybe can't afford it, but, you know, are their kids being left out because we don't have a REC league? So I have a lot of questions about that.
I can address.
And I kind of thought we had it worked out with, with BLAST to do their youth program. But I don't know.
I did ask BLAST about the fee. And so the BLAST, it's, I think, $500 a year for the travel team and $100 for the REC, for the youth league.
Their youth league.
Which is in line with what other municipalities charge.
Probably about exactly what the REC league would be, at least.
I think I paid, I paid 85 to 100, you know, 12 years ago when my kids were playing soccer.
So they do, they do distinguish between those that would travel and those that are just there for-
Two different, two different.
-rec purposes.
Yeah. I think, and I, I've got some, well, Mayor, I know you-
Yes, well, Mayor, maybe you can answer these questions. I'm just throwing, I'm throwing these questions out. So if we form this REC league, who's going to run the REC league?
Okay. Can, oh. So I want to read the resolution so you can understand what it says. It says, "Be resolved by the Governor body of the City of Fairhope that all recreational soccer and intramural activities shall be run and operated by the city's REC department through all volunteer-run leagues starting June 30." Well, I mean, that's not necessarily the case. Registration for all 2022 Fairhope Youth Recreation Intramural Soccer will be through the city's new software program. I mean, typically, if you have a REC league, you do your signups yourself. It's not run through our software program. Or at the direction of the Director of Parks and REC. The city's recreation department shall operate all concessions for soccer, recreational, and intramural activities at Manly and Founders through city accounts, and shall use all the building, storage, grounds for exclusive use and enjoyment of city-sponsored recreational sports only. The City of Fairhope's Recreation Department does not have the staff or the time to run the concession stands, period. We spent way more money in overtime and, and, I mean, in personnel to run the concession stand this past season than we should have. The Recreation Department shall be exclusively responsible for the recreation and intramural sponsorships and accounting, and have exclusive right to place sponsor signage on city property at Manly and Founders. Well, it says the Recreation Department is that the soccer folks or our Recreation Department? Obviously, we can place sponsor signage on our fields if we want to. The governing board, subject to strict oversight of all books and records of the account, which we do that every year with every REC league that we have. They come in, they do a recreational summit where they present their financials, their bylaws, their current board. My concern is that the way this reads, that the city's going to be doing most of the work and not the volunteer board. And we, again, are not in the business of running recreational programs. If we want to do that, then fine. If we want to do that, then fine, that's, but we need to add staff to be able to do that. We cannot take on running these, we cannot be the lead in this. The recreational boards for like baseball, soccer previously, I guess, basketball, they all run their own programs and we serve as support staff. You know, we might help with field maintenance and that kind of stuff, but we do not run the leagues. We do not want to be in the business of running the leagues.
So for, to compare that to baseball, the Fairhope Youth Baseball League is responsible for running the league and the operations. The rec department does, you know, we oversee maintenance.
Correct.
I say oversee it because the rec league probably has some tasks.
We really oversee all the maintenance. They have to, they need to pick up the trash before they leave, clean out the press boxes, put the, you know, controllers up for the scoreboards if they will do that.
We line the fields for them too?
We line the fields, we do, yeah. We do it all.
And they wouldn't have made it into town I grew up in.
I know. But again, some of that is because that's our preference, not because that's, you know, not that those, they wouldn't want to get out there and do it themselves, but some of that's our preference because sometimes correcting what others do to your fields is, you know, harder than doing it yourself. But again, I want to be very clear on the fact that if this happens, I have no problem with it happening, but we are not governed by law, you know, or anything to offer this recreational opportunity. I mean, the other program is running legally and above board and has opportunity for people who want to play soccer. Again, I have no problem with having a competing organization. I just want to be clear on the fact, the way this is worded and the way it reads, it puts a lot of responsibility off on our rec department and on the city that we did not intend to have.
What's the arrangement for the concessions again with the, with the BLAST, with the Fairhope Soccer League?
There is no arrangement for the concessions. We have been running the concession stand, our staff has. They've been out there on weekends, they've been out there at night after their eight-hour-a-day jobs.
We don't do this, who's going to?
There is, right now, there is no provision for that. You know, we would have to figure something out.
And the equipment, unfortunately, has entered into a bid for that.
You know, I think that we could put that up for bid.
And we can do that, but we have been told that there was going to be another group that wanted to come in and run the, run the league and run the concession stand, but...
Meaning this group?
Yes.
Whoever it might have been, but I just want to be really clear that we are not in the business of running a concession stand.
Yeah, I think it's unfair to the employees.
It is.
I mean, it's like, not even anywhere close to the job description that they're running our soccer league.
And I think Pat White would tell you that he doesn't, he never wants to work a concession stand again.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, I don't blame you neither.
But I think we have to have a solution to that.
We do, we do.
And we can, and we're, you know, getting into the busy part of the season. We need a plan in place.
We do.
To keep those concession stands operational. And I understand it's such a big enterprise, we can't just give that to BLAST without competition.
Bidding it. And we can bid it. We have no problem with bidding it. We could...
The challenge might be that they own a lot of the equipment.
They do. They would have to pull, they would pull their equipment out, I'm sure, if they didn't win that agreement.
They talked about trading it in with us for credit, but...
I don't know how much argument they have for having their equipment in our buildings though. Like every other person that puts things in city, you, you know, that part I'd push back on. If you put something in a city facility and you leave it there, it becomes city property. So I think they're using that as a poker chip to get a better deal, but I don't know that they can do that. I'd probably have to ask our attorney about that, if they could...
Become fixtures. And I had a question about this line because this, I wouldn't want to do anything that would invalidate what we've already worked out with BLAST and they're paying rec rate, but there's a line that says, "The recreation department shall be exclusively responsible for recreation and intramural sponsorships and accounting and shall have exclusive right to sponsor..." No, that's not the page I'm looking for.
The first sentence, "That all soccer, recreational, and intramural activities shall be run and operated by the city's recreation department through volunteer-run leagues."
It's the one in between there. It's, "The city's rec department shall operate all concessions, recreational, intramural services at Manly Founders through the city accounts, shall have use of all building, storage, and grounds for the exclusive use and enjoyment of city-sponsored recreational sports only." That seems like that...
Excluding is trying to exclude that group.
They exclude their youth group.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's what it appears to say.
I don't know that we could do that because we've just...
Signed an agreement with them.
Signed an agreement with them. So we'd have to unwind that. I mean, I don't have a problem with the group that wants to run the league, coming in and running the league, but I think we definitely have already addressed that we don't want to run a concession stand.
And typically, you know, the other leagues that we have, they do run the concession stand. I mean, like baseball does, SWM, you know, whoever it might be, they run their own concession stand. So that would be part of this agreement as well. But again, it has to be that they, they will run it, they will man it for whatever activities are going on there.
I'd have to replace all that language.
Yeah.
It says, "City Recreation Department to Fairhope Youth Soccer," whatever title it would be given.
Right.
Fairhope Recreational Soccer League.
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. I just want to make sure that y'all are reading what the resolution said and that, yeah, and that we're clear on what the understanding of it is before anything got passed.
I feel like it would need to be reworked. I mean, I don't have an issue with the, with the group that wants to do that, but I think it needs to be reworked, rewritten, and have an opportunity to review it before it's on here. And I think that we need to have a lot of the language changed in regards to who's going to be actually running it and who's going to be responsible. I mean, we're happy, as you said, to maintain the fields and be support, but we're not running the league.
And we're happy to have this group come in and run a rec program. I have no problem with that. But again, there, I think we need to be careful on the wording.
And I think we also want to be careful being, I know that the other league has already signed up a substantial amount of people probably, so the two would, I know would be competing, which is fine, but sometimes that's, may represent a challenge too.
And that's one area where I do think our software will play a big, a big factor because you do schedule the fields using that software now. So I think that's helpful in not creating confusion for, you know, field usage and stuff. But again, I mean, I think for me, the concession stand is one of the bigger issues. I just don't want to put the staff in that position again.
Okay.
I could rewrite that so that I could adopt that, but there's a lot of changes that have to go in there for me personally.
Councilman Boone, any comments, any thoughts?
One thing is we need this something in place. If we vote this down, it can't come back, back up for six months. So if it does, not a good arguments, we might need to table it. So we don't have a six-month wait, because that we don't want.
All right.
Be willing to edit it quite a bit. It'd be heavily edited from this, though.
I mean, I think you could, I mean, if it's voted down, it has to wait like six months. If it's voted down, but if we table it or pull it, then we can bring it back to the next meeting and tweak the language.
That is correct.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to recommend table it.
Table it now? Yep. Okay.
Or pulling it. I just don't know how, I don't know what the vote would be, but I can't...
And I feel like we need Cory to weigh in a little bit on it too.
Well, yeah, Cory's going, you know, I think unless he changes his mind, he's going to be in favor, so that's a vote in favor. That's why I'm saying, you know, I'll either pull it, pull or table.
Yeah.
The word's exclusive and putting that on the rec department.
No, that's, that's a no-go for me. Next item, and I'm going to just keep moving along real quick so we can try and address this. The Trinity Pres using the area between the pier and the duck pond for the drive-through Nativity scene, who would that fall under? Was that? I mean, I know the logic is probably that they've outgrown their space and creating traffic issues.
I think they've reached out to the police department and us, gosh, probably six months back, and I think that is the understanding. And they were, they were pretty set on the duck pond area. It was my understanding that I do believe that they want to involve a couple of more churches alongside Trinity Presbyterian to do the drive-through Nativity. So basically just, yeah, they are, they're looking at the North Beach Loop for like staging area and...
Are y'all here with Trinity Presbyterian? Yeah. Okay. Oh, okay. So I believe that is... Oh, y'all are? Oh, come on in, the lady, yeah. No, 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 no. I didn't even see you back there.
But I've been doing the event at Trinity the last six years. My name's Lisa Daly, long time Fairhopeian. We have kind of outgrown it, but also there's five other churches that have come to us that want to be involved in it. And we can't do it on our property with five other churches. And we also think it's something that so many in our city are interested in, it would be good to have it at a city location.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts on soccer?
Yeah, we see about 350. And I'll tell you that, because I'm the one that says, "Thank you for coming," a majority are not Trinity Presbyterian people. There's so many from various churches in the community. And I do know that because of traffic, we have the, we've had police help every year. They, at Orange Street and Scenic 98, they turn up Orange Street and come around Satsuma to our church, and that's two tenths of a mile. But if you come down Fairhope Avenue where you turn off to go on 98 to go Scenic 98, it's four tenths of a mile from there to where we would start the event.
Okay. And I know the one question, and this is actually a question for Paige, I've been a couple of years to y'all's Nativity, it's always a great event, but Paige, we've not typically used this space before.
We have not.
Okay, so...
So that is something that, you know, it would need council approval.
And then we need to make it available for future use for other groups.
Right. I mean, in our ordinance now, for our application process for our street rentals, I think it just designates our CBD. So this is outside. Now, you know, they are looking to use the park and the street, so it's kind of a...
Kind of all in one?
They're kind of looking to use both, so not one per se or both. It's not necessarily just a walk. They want to use the park, but they also want to use the streets for the drive-through portion. So it's kind of a little bit different.
Do you have a, a, a walk?
We have.
Okay.
We have had a few walks down there, I believe.
All-timers walk?
The all-timers walk.
I'm all for the Nativity scene, but I do have an issue with the fact that the ordinance does not allow that park to be rented and you're asking for something that the law doesn't allow. So how do we word that to say, suspend with the rules? Marcus, do you suspend with the rules to make that exception? Is that how you make it legal?
I think you could just say it by individual resolution. If there's a park that's not subject to a normal course of rental...
And I guess, and she did kind of cover by saying that's why it's coming to the council, but at the same time, council can't hear every special request. We have barriers there, so things that aren't supposed to be asked for don't come before the council. Not saying this is, this is, you know, I'm sensitive saying this, but we, you know, you gotta be careful setting precedent too.
I understand, I totally understand.
We do.
Because as soon as we, something comes up and says, "We want to use that park," well, we don't rent it. Well, you rented it to that church.
Well, it would have to be approved and then... So...
I think, I mean, well...
There's options, there's St. Albion and one of the north part and the, or the south part, if you want.